Officers, I'm gonna just ask you, maybe just sit in the front row for one second. Shim, please come to the front. No, thank you councillor Wade for pointing that out. Shim's from Contour Consultants, you're very welcome. And as soon as you press that button, you've got five minutes to address the meeting.
Thank you mayor, deputy mayor and councillors for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name's Shim Curry, I'm the director at Contour Consultants and we're the town planning consultancy representing the permit applicant for this proposal, who is Carpe Group. First of all, I want to thank the council officers for their work during the application process, which has included a thorough assessment, referrals to all technical departments, and we note that all technical departments support the issuance of a permit, subject to conditions. In summary, the proposal represents an appropriate contribution to this part of Collingwood. It's supported by the applicable mixed-use zone and the design and development overlay, which encourages this type and scale of development in the area. The proposal fits into the evolving fabric of Langridge, Cambridge and Derby Streets, appreciating the examples of the mid-rise form on surrounding properties, which already exists. The proposed built form provides an appropriate response to the DDO, achieving the objectives and does not compromise the external amenity of the public realm or the neighbouring properties. In addition to the delivery of much-needed housing in this part of Yarra, the proposal also includes best-practice ESD principles and commits to public realm streetscape improvements on all streetscapes. We support the findings in the council officer report, which is comprehensive, subject to conditions. It supports the granting of a permit and I'm happy to answer any questions that might be directed to us.
Thanks Shim, any questions to Mr Curry? No, thank you sir, thank you for your submission. Officers, can you please come back to the front desk? Councillor Wade, you've got some questions? Thank you.
Just in the absence of any of our objectors tonight, I just wanted to ask one question in particular that one objector raised about the air conditioning unit on the roof and noting there have been a lot of developments in this part of Collingwood and some of them have been dealt with separately. He was wondering how the air conditioning and the various items, or there's a fancy planning term for the facilities on the roof, how they will be shielded from public view so that neighbouring properties who are about the same height won't be looking straight into an air conditioning unit.
Thank you councillor Wade and through you Chair. The roof plant will have a 1.8 metre high screen around the perimeter of where those roof plant services are. That includes the air conditioning units. We have also included a condition that requires the plant screen to be acoustically treated to ensure that noise emissions are contained. Given the setbacks as well of the roof terrace, there would be very limited views from the public realm, particularly along the street frontages, Cambridge, Derby and Langridge Streets. There would be some views of the plant screen from other nearby apartments, particularly apartments that are taller than the proposed development. However, we consider that to be part and parcel of being in an area where mid-rise development is encouraged to look at.
Councillor Wade, do you have another question?
Yes, I do. My next question is, is the design on page 140, is that the kind of best cross-section of the street of what it will look like once this building goes in? Because obviously this building is a little bit above the DDO and so I'm just trying to get a sense of what the streetscape will look like. And that street I'm talking about is Langridge Street.
Sorry, do you mind repeating the question?
So, there's a diagram on page 140, it's part of one of the, part of the original proposal, I think, which shows what the Langridge Street cross-section, I think, will look like. Is that the best version of kind of understanding the scale of it compared to the neighbouring buildings?
Through you Chair, this is just a sketch and the idea is just to sort of generally illustrate the transition in building height from the much taller 13-storey building on Wellington Street going eastwards. I should also point out that the the sketch of the development next to the subject site is just indicative of what could be achieved having regard to future development against the DDO 23. It's not anything that's been put forward in an application, it's just indicative to be able to illustrate how that transition in height could be achieved.
Okay, any other quick councillor Gomez?
I think I'm foreshadowing a potential amendment by councillor Wade, but I just wanted to focus on page 75 of the agenda. It's a map of the ground floor and the bike racks down there. I think I'm foreshadowing a potential change there, I just wanted to ask a question while I have the opportunity. If we were to shift all those vertical hanging bikes to horizontal, normal bike parking, is the space big enough?
Thank you councillor Gomez, through you Chair. Horizontal bicycle racks require additional space. As part of the application, the applicant submitted a sketch plan showing a revised ground floor layout that relocates the bicycle parking to the Langridge Street side of the development. Whilst additional horizontal bicycle spaces could be provided, it would probably result in a reduction of the number of bicycle parking spaces currently proposed. Vertical spaces allow additional bicycle parking spaces to be accommodated. That being said, the statutory requirement for residential bicycle parking spaces is only, is six. I believe we've got 33 provided for residents, so, but I would have to defer to the applicant to be able to confirm whether there would be sufficient space for all bicycle parking spaces to be horizontal.
Councillor Gomez?
Just as a follow-up, it's nothing against the design, it's just that the lived experience today, e-bikes, which are encouraged to be used here because there's GPO points down there for charging, they're heavy, so trying to lift them into a vertical orientation, which I have to do at my house, is quite challenging.
Okay, point taken. Any other question, councillor Mackenzie?
Yeah, so I just want to understand a little bit more why we are not forming a decision tonight, but instead putting something to VCAT, is that, is that normal?
Thank you councillor Mackenzie, through you Chair. So, as part of the application process, council planning officers have 60 statutory days to issue a decision. If a decision is not reached within that time, the applicants can appeal what they call a failure to determine with the Victorian Civil and Administrative Tribunal, VCAT, and that's if the decision has not been made within 60 days. So, at that point, the responsible authority becomes VCAT when it comes to making the decision. So, council planning officers can only form a position of support or refusal.
Deputy Mayor? Is that typical, that we take longer than 60 days? Is it because it's a large development or what? Can you help me understand that, please?
Through you Chair, that's correct. Applications of this size and scale do typically take longer to assess. There's a lot more referrals that need to be undertaken, which take time. Up until recently, these applications were advertised for 28 days as well. We can't issue a decision within that 28-day advertising period, so that also delays the process. Often, once we get referral comments back, there's a bit of back and forth with the applicant about whether we look at amending the application further before a decision. So, that naturally, for applications of this scale prolongs the process and results in us deciding on things after that 60-day timeframe.
And just a follow-on question from deputy mayor. It's correct to say that this happens quite often with medium to large-sized developments in the city of Yarra, but the good news is that VCAT will not really determine a position until they've heard what council's opinion is via PDC meeting. Is that correct?
Thank you mayor, yes, that's correct. Council officers will form a position after the PDC and that position is circulated to VCAT, other parties at VCAT as well as all original submitters. Following that, there's a compulsory conference, which is like a mediation session, where there's an opportunity to put forward and negotiate an alternative outcome. But if no outcome is reached during that compulsory conference, it then proceeds to a full hearing, which in this case is scheduled for October.
Thank you, any other questions? I believe councillor Wade's got an alternative motion, which I'm very happy to second. Councillor Wade, do you want to take over?
Yes, sure thing, so my, am I just speaking to what it is first?
Yeah, just speak to what,
Yeah, okay, great.
Is it on the screen, is there a screen? Okay, is there one for the residents, yeah, there is, sorry, down there. So, yeah, if you just look to your left or right, you'll see councillor Wade's alternative motion. You've got a second, so you might as well just speak.
Speak to it, yeah, sure.
You've got five minutes.
Great, three minutes. So, this is the officer recommendation with two slight amendments. One is to address the issue about bicycle parking and ensure that 50% of them are grounded, horizontal, rather than vertical. That's to try to strike a balance between those two concerns about people not being able to lift their bikes because either it's an e-bike or it's a cargo bike, or you're like me and you can't really lift any bikes. I'm not a particularly strong bike lifting person myself and I know there's a lot of people in our community who feel like that. And often we see the vertical bike racks in buildings are relatively empty because I think a lot of people don't feel comfortable lifting their bikes onto them. So, that's something where I think the Australian standards might need to shift to take into account the fact that it's a bit gendered, it's a bit ageist, it's a bit ableist. There's a whole lot of things going on with bike parking, but I hope my colleagues will support me tonight in a more balanced solution on that front. And the other minor change is just to get Indigenous planting on the rooftop garden, which I know residents of Collingwood would support and we want to see more of in our community. At a more general level, I wanted to thank officers for the huge amount of work that they've gone into in assessing the application and putting together all of the recommendations. I think the conditions that have been outlined will make it a significantly better outcome for residents of the building as well as their neighbours. We've also managed to achieve some really good public realm outcomes, so more seating on the street, more planting, more curb outstands. And that's the sort of thing that you really can't do unless you've got planners who know what they're doing and are working through these things to try to make sure that these developments fit well into our community. And we've seen a lot, a lot of development in South Collingwood and so it's really good to know that we've got somebody paying really close attention to what it ends up looking like. The 60 days, I just wanted to comment on briefly. I think this, this report, anybody who reads it can see how it would take a while to prepare. It's incredibly detailed, there's a lot of work to be done, but we do result in that better outcome. When we see the state taking over planning decisions from us, as we'll see in the next item tonight, they often don't take 60 days, they often take much more than that and in fact have given themselves longer periods than they give councils. And it seems quite unreasonable to me and then they don't even meet their own timeframes. So, I am glad that we'll be getting our opinion in front of VCAT and I think 60 days is not enough. The development is a little bit higher than I would have liked, but I think they've offset that in other ways. And that's why I think how it looks on the street is really important, is that building just downhill from it is really, really large. But I think they'll complement each other relatively nicely and something worse could be built on this site. So, for me, it's a quite good compromise outcome and we'll have more, more people living in our community as a result of it. So, I would commend this motion to my colleagues.
Thank you. In seconding the motion, the state government recently told the city of Yarra that we've got to approve 44,000 new dwellings by 2050. If this motion of councillor Wade's passed tonight, we're down to 43,972 to go. The, but nothing's ever perfect and there's obviously some breaches of the preferred heights and various other aspects. But when you take it in totality and when you look at it in comparison to some of the other developments that we've had in the city of Yarra, it's quite modest. Across the road to the east, at the old Heser Job, which I actually worked on for a long time, it's maybe four years old now, five years old max, that's twice the size. So, this is actually, you know, a nine-storey mixed-use building is actually quite a modest size in that vicinity. And just up the road, you've got a 20-storey public housing terrace. It's also got quite a lot of car parking on site, 49 for 28 dwellings, which by some of the standards of some of the developments that come to PDC is quite a lot, 33 bike spaces. And on that basis, I think that we have to accept that this is acceptable, it's not perfect. But I think it's a good, it's a good development and it will add to the housing stock, which is obviously a good thing in general to try and deal with the existential housing crisis that we have on this continent. So, I'm very happy to second councillor Wade's motion, which makes some important, minor but important changes to the officer recommendation. And again, like councillor Wade, I hope my colleagues pass it, thank you. Anyone would like to speak to this motion? Okay, well, there's no right of reply on that basis, so we'll just go to the vote. All those in favour, please raise your hand, that's passed unanimously, thank you very much. We'll move on now to the final. Yeah, yeah, maybe the officers can just explain the process to Mr Curry and any objectors who are listening online, what happens from here on in, please?
Thank you mayor, so from here, planning officers will circulate council's position to VCAT and those that are parties to the appeal as well as those who made a submission to the original application. This will occur before 31st of July. A compulsory conference for this matter is scheduled for the 7th of August and the hearing is scheduled for the 6th to the 9th of October.
Thank you. Okay, we move on to DDP application reports, 6.1 PPE 25 stroke 0291, 675 Victoria Street, Abbotsford. We've got quite a few, we've got seven people registered to speak, but I believe I've got a procedural motion pending from councillor Harrison. Councillor Harrison, do you want to move that motion and if you've got us, well, tell us what that motion is?
Okay, so I'd like to move a motion that Barry Dixon be permitted to present this evening, even though he did not register by the deadline yesterday.
Secondary, councillor Davies, any, let's just, any discussion on that? All those in favour, please raise your hand, thank you, that's passed unanimously. Well, let's start with Mr Dixon, Barry Dixon, are you here? Oh, well, that was a waste of time. All right, well, we move right along. If Mr Dixon comes in, tell him all for turning up late and we will let him speak, but he's coming from Q, oh, that's a long way. All right. Pardon? I shouldn't attack anyone from Q, we've got the Lord Mayor here from Burundara. Hayley, Hayley, are you here? Hayley D? No, okay, this is good. Harley, oh, I've got it down here, it's Hayley, Harley, welcome, sorry sir. You've got five minutes to address the meeting, once you press that button in front of you, welcome.
There are several issues I'd like to raise with this development proposal. EG has a consistent record of proposing oversized, poorly-integrated developments in flood-prone areas and locations already under infrastructure strain. This is no exception. The design is driven by a targeted 15, enormous 15% financial return achieved at the expense of local communities' amenity and environment. The visuals submitted within the planning application are misleading. They depict lush greenery, generous open spaces and established tree cover that simply, that simply cannot survive the scale and footprint of the proposed development. In reality, what's being proposed is a 16-storey tower, more than double the height of the current ongoing development at River Boulevard, which is a more acceptable six to seven stories high. The structure is excessively bulky and ill-fitting for the site with minimal setbacks and a dominating vertical presence. There's already been objections lodged by the Collingwood Heritage Society and the Burundura Council with regard to this. It would severely disrupt the visual integrity of the Yarra River corridor, imposing concrete mass where natural foliage now stands. The proposal necessitates removal of mature trees and vegetation features that define the livability of the apartments near Yarra. In a place of greenery and habitat, we'd be left with concrete and shadow. The proposal seeks to inject hundreds of new dwellings into a precinct already straining under limited infrastructure, restricted access and mounting traffic congestion. Yet there is no credible accountability for how this influx will affect circulation. While the development includes parking, it offers no clear city-bound turn, forcing vehicles into narrow local streets like Acacia Place, creating choke points and compounding gridlock. It's careless approach that demonstrates little grasp of how transport functions in the area. This part of Abbotsford is served by a single tram route. Trams are not trains, they don't carry the same amount of people. Trams carry as few as 56 passengers and arrive every six minutes. During peak periods, they're already overflowing. Between the new River Boulevard development and this proposal, over 900 additional residents will be funneled into a network that cannot absorb them. The local infrastructure isn't just strained, it's at breaking point. Residents of Acacia Place rely heavily on their balconies for natural light, air circulation and connection to the outdoors. My apartment in particular, the only open space where I can get natural light is from the balcony that would directly face this development. Yet the proposed development blocked the only balcony that faced directly into the west, cutting off sunlight entirely and exposing it to constant dust, smoke and fine particles during excavation and construction. There is no allowance for ventilation, daylight access or respectful separation. Council needs to draw the line here, look past the misleading graphics and fluffy statements. Local residents deserve better than being collateral damage in the state government's relentless pursuit of high-density development at the expense of local community. I'd also like to raise that back in 2021, the Now Planning Minister wrote a Facebook post where she said that a development in Seaford, which would introduce just 14 extra homes, was inconsistent with the neighbourhood character, the local ecology and landscape and Indigenous heritage. It will set a really bad precedent, she said. I indicated previously that the scale, scope and density of the proposed development is entirely out of context with very little, very likely negative impacts on the local community and neighbourhood character. Further, the additional traffic movements associated with proposed developments likely have significant impacts on the pedestrian and vehicle safety in the area and congestion. These are all issues which I have raised, which I have previously raised and yet they are still going ahead with these types of outrageous developments. I implore the council to show more integrity than the State Planning Minister and the Labor Government. That's it.
Thank you Harley. The next speaker is Tony Holt. Tony? Okay, well, we'll take Tony first and then we'll come back to Barry, is Tony here? Okay. Yeah, okay, all right, let's go back to Barry Dixon. Barry, if you'd like to come to the front, if we could just speed this along, please? It's not musical chairs, it's a Section 86 Committee under the Local Government Act, so can you just get your act together here? Mr Dixon, you've got five minutes starting now.
Thank you, so I'm a resident of Q, on the Q side of the river. I've lived there for over 30 years and we've seen the river change its corridor over that period of time and ever-increasing mass of buildings going up on the Yarra side. And I've been watching that process with deep concern. The current proposal is a 15-storey residential tower on the river's edge on the site zone Commercial 1 in one of the most protected and visually intact stretches of the Yarra River. It would be the tallest building ever proposed on the river outside the CBD. It's not a modest variation in what the planning controls say they can do, it's not a river-sensitive response, it's not a legitimate use of minister's fast-track process, there's no affordable housing, no public open space, no community benefit and only a net community loss. Even with the planners' suggested changes, the proposal breaches every key control. It exceeds a discretionary height limit by over 20 metres, it fails the 30-metre vegetated setback, it visually dominates the tree corridor, it offers no ecological restoration, it provides no public access or open space. Clause 21.09 and DDO 1 both require built form to be subordinate to vegetation. This proposal would impose a sheer vertical wall that looms above the canopy, erasing the layered green character of that stretch of river. It is the opposite of the planning scheme calls for. Flood risk, the site sits within a land subject to inundation overlay. Flood risks here are not hypothetical, they're real and recurring. The previous application was withdrawn after Melbourne Water refused it, citing unacceptable flood risk to life and property. The situation remains unchanged, developers have done nothing to acknowledge or mitigate those risks, no updated modelling, no revised, no revised design and no safe pedestrian egress. The basement ramp remains the only exit, a route that could be impassable in a flood. There is no demonstratable strategy for evacuation. It's just not a compliance issue, it's a public safety issue. And then there's the use. The site is zone Commercial 1, which may allow residential use above a ground floor with a permit, but the developers are relying on existing users' rights to justify a 15-storey residential tower, even though the current use is commercial. Clause 63 does not permit a change of use on this scale by default, nor does it exempt the proposal from complying with DDO 1 or the flood overlays. This appears to be an attempt to bypass proper scrutiny and cannot be allowed to stand. Councillors, this proposal is a test, a test of planning integrity, a test of how we apply discretion, a test of whether we uphold the Yarra River Protection Act, which recognises the river as a living entity and demands that built form be subordinate to it. We know the minister has courage of this application, but you are responsible authority. The scheme already tells us what an acceptable outcome looks like. You still have power to shape the outcome by setting clear enforceable conditions that align with the planning scheme. These conditions must include built form These conditions must include built form within the DDA 01 height, a 30-metre vegetated setback and ecological restoration, public access at the river's edge, verified flood mitigation and safe egress, a use of scale that responds to zoning and context. This is how we protect the Yarra and this is how development earns community trust. It's not just about rejecting development, it's about doing it right with integrity, care and respect for place. Please protect the river, uphold the scheme and help deliver an outcome the community, community can be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. The next person to submit is Andrew Mangelsdorf. So the lights on, so you can just start and we'll start timing you, once you start speaking.
Good evening, Chairperson and councillors. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. My name is Andrew Mangelsdorf and I'm a resident who lives directly adjacent to the proposed development on Victoria Street. Chairperson, I stand here not in opposition to development itself, but in strong objection to this specific proposal in its current form. It is over-scaled, poorly-integrated and fails to consider both the physical constraints of the site and the needs of the surrounding community. The scale and intensity of the proposed building are inappropriate for the parcel of land and are completely out of step with the character of nearby developments. This is not good planning, it's over, over-development that pushes well beyond the limits of what this location can accommodate. More frustrating is the fact that there is already a significant amount of vacant commercial space nearby, along with many derelict or under-utilised sites far better suited to high density. These are the places we should be targeting for growth, not this constrained site, which borders established homes and already strained infrastructure. The traffic impacts alone should cause this committee to raise concerns. This proposal will place additional pressure on two key intersections, Victoria Street with both River Boulevard and with Burnley Street. These intersections already experience congestion due to high tram and vehicle volumes. This proposal would only intensify those problems. Worse still, it increases the likelihood of unsafe U-turns, particularly where there are no dedicated U-turn lanes or signals. The intersection at Burnley Street is already a known risk area. More vehicles attempting U-turns, including near-active tram tracks, is a public safety issue. And this, sorry, and this congestion won't stay contained. It has the potential to create a domino gridlock effect around Victoria Gardens and Victoria Street, as well as private property not designed to carry through traffic. Once these key points become blocked, the ripple effect will severely compromise traffic flow throughout the entire area. Accessibility is another major failing. The proposed pedestrian link to the riverfront is not Disability Discrimination Act compliant, it relies solely on stairs. This excludes people with mobility challenges, older residents and families with prams. We should not in 2025 be approving any public accessway that does not fully accommodate all members of our community. There is also an unacceptable environmental cost. The proposal requires the removing of a number of mature trees, including two iconic red maple trees at the front of the site. These trees are a valued feature of the streetscape and provide important visual and ecological amenity. Their removal is neither justified nor necessary. A revised design with a drop, a front drop-off zone could preserve them while improving access and green cover. As someone whose property borders the site, I can also speak to the direct personal impact this will have on us. The proposed building will allow residents to directly overlook our bedrooms and living rooms, stripping away any sense of privacy. In addition, the overshadowing caused by the building's height and proximity will deprive our home of natural light for much of the day. This will increase reliance on artificial lighting and heating, elevate our energy bills, carbon emissions and negatively affect wellbeing. The proposal also fails to account for wind tunneling effects, which would make our balcony and outdoor spaces less usable, further eroding our quality of life. Chairperson, I want to reiterate, this is not a blanket objection to redevelopment. We recognise the need for new housing, but this development must be scaled down and fundamentally rethought. If support for this proposal is to be granted, it must be conditional on multiple substantial modifications, including reducing the building height by at least two stories and redesigning the upper six levels to reduce overshadowing and align with surrounding developments, frosting all east-facing windows and requiring 1.8-metre-high opaque balustrades on all east-facing balconies. Redesigning the riverfront pedestrian link and increasing the eastern boundary setback to be fully DDA compliant by widening it to six metres and including accessible ramps. This is a unique opportunity, not just to deliver housing, but to do so in a way that enhances rather than undermines the existing community.
Thank you, Andrew, your time is finished. The next speaker is Rachel Brown.
So press the bottom button? Okay. Thank you, Chairman and councillors, for the chance to address you. I'm Rachel Brown and I live on the western side of the Eden Building at Acacia Place. I'll be speaking on the proposed development's height, scale and bulk. The proposal is an attempt to resuscitate its first failed iteration by exploiting the Development Facilitation Programme. I'm a realist and I was initially going to address you on the alterations needed for the development to meet planning provisions, but those alterations would be so many and so substantial that councillors with respect, refusal is the only way forward and I'll explain why. Height, the 14-storey proposal would make it the tallest building in the entire Yarra, Yarra River corridor outside the CBD. The height of almost 44 metres outrageously ignores discretionary height limit of 18 metres. Even with the proposed modification of two stories removed, it will still more than double the discretionary height controls. Amenity? I started renting in Eden in 2015 and I bought the same apartment in 2020. I made it my home largely because of the privacy and security it offers, which is crucial to me both given the nature of my job and as a woman living alone. This development will violate my privacy and that of every other resident leaving on Eden's western side, a right protected by the Victorian Charter of Human Rights. A wall of surveillance will be looking over every balcony and into every living room and bedroom. As well as privacy, residents will lose sunlight and daylight. Some balcony and window openings between Eden and 675 are less than nine metres apart. This is a breach of Clause 58 of the Planning Act. Also, VCAT in 2023 ruled that sunlight is a basic human right, a ruling I'm confident human rights tribunals will be keen to uphold into the future. And this VCAT ruling related to a Brunswick seven-storey apartment block, so half the size of 675's proposal. On the Yarra River interface, in 2016, the Planning Minister said there are many sites within the vicinity that could be redeveloped, but there's only one Yarra River. And this is ever truer today. Just because we can develop doesn't mean we should. The Yarra is a precious resource for all Victorians and during COVID, trying to get through that alone, I've got to tell you, the river was my only solace. Even the Yarra Planner's Report concedes the proposal breaches provisions around height, bulk and dominance over the river corridor. Here are three breaches of DDA 01 and Clause 21.09 of the Yarra Planning Scheme. It will tower 20 metres above the existing tree canopy. 20 metres. How is that delicate integration in the river corridor? Regarding setbacks, balconies on both the east and west sides of the tower fall short of the setback requirement of 30 metres by 20 metres. This is not a minor departure, it's a major encroachment on protected riverland. The tower dominates the river, the skyline and neighbours. There's no meaningful tiering to soften the form, no landscape buffers or natural materials, just visual intrusion and overshadowing. On existing use rights, the developer appears to be using these so-called rights to justify this residential development. This is a commercial premises that's not occupied 24/7. Existing use rights, so the Planning Act Clause 63, does not permit a change of its current use to a 14-storey residence with 24/7 occupancy. And this clause certainly doesn't exempt it from complying with the Yarra Planning Scheme. This, I see, is a trap for council and the Planning Minister. This proposal doesn't have the legal foundation of existing use rights. So if you're being asked to wave this through on that false protection, that alone is a reason for refusal. On the Development Facilitation Programme. The developer's trying to exploit this programme. This programme was not designed for a building of this scale and intensity in such a delicate ecological location. The DFP is supposed to fast-track projects that deliver public benefits, critical infrastructure or community assets. This project does none of that. It delivers no affordable or social housing, apart from a token contribution, that's 0.1% of the project cost, 0.1%. And the community hub is to be run by the developer's own charity, which makes a mockery of this scheme. It deeply concerns me that this scheme will allow the Planning Minister's office to make a captain's call on a project that could bypass planning security and override statutory protections. And yet the Planning Minister will remain unaccountable, given the removal of third-party appeal rights to VCAT. I mainly work on criminal cases and even convicted murderers have appeal rights, yet thousands of residents who be affected by this will have no recourse, which genuinely stackers me. And I suspect they'll vent that anger at the November 26 state election. The only benefit of this project is private profit, it fails the net community benefit test and none of it meets the standards expected of residential development in a sensitive river corridor.
Sorry, Rachel, it breaks my heart, but you've run out of time. The next speaker is Trevor, well, sorry, Mark Simpson. The microphone is on, Mark, so you can just kick in straight away.
Am I able to hand out a summary of resident concerns? Am I able, sorry? Sorry. Am I able to hand out a summary of resident concerns to councillors?
Yes, you can.
Thank you.
Give it to Mel here, she'll do it for you. Thanks, Mel. Mark, welcome. You've got five minutes from the minute you start talking.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to thank the Chair and councillors for the opportunity to make this verbal submission. My name is Mark Simpson and my apartment is on the ground level of Eden Building in Acacia Place. Tonight I would like to concentrate specifically on traffic management issues. I consider there are unsolvable issues associated with development in the present form and consequently urge council not to support the application. In addition, I have not seen and I don't think council's seen any submission from Vicroads. I think council should not support the project without input from Vicroads on this critical aspect of the proposed development. I'd like to cover four main points. The first is vehicles exiting the property. The traffic engineering assessment did not consider where the vehicles were intending to head. The proposed driveway exit is very close to the Victoria Street River Boulevard traffic lights and there are two outgoing lanes and one right-hand turn lane. I'd expect a significant proportion of all exiting traffic would want to turn, head towards the city, in the city direction. And that would also be required if they wanted to get to Burnley Street or onto the Monash Freeway. Ideally, this would be done by making a U-turn from the right-hand turn lane. However, figure two of the traffic engineering assessment shows that if there are only three vehicles already queued in the right-hand turn lane, then it would not be possible for a vehicle exiting the property to enter the turn lane. During the large parts of the day, the turn lane generally has several vehicles waiting to turn. In addition, in the future, there'll be greater demand on the right-hand turn lane due to the development in River Boulevard and what will happen in Victoria Gardens. And this means there'll be a significant amount of time where it would not be possible for a vehicle exiting the proposed driveway to access the right-hand turn lane. This will almost certainly lead to right-hand turn vehicles blocking a through lane or going past the intersection, making an illegal U-turn on the east side and then coming back or turning into a driveway. And I've actually seen that happen with the current situation. Acacia Place driveway is a private road on private property and it's not designed to handle this type of traffic movement. The increase in vehicles performing this manoeuvre in frustration will increase congestion and increase risk to Acacia Place residents. I cannot see a solution to this issue with the proposed development in its current form. The second point I'd like to talk about is there's no off-street parking for non-resident cars. In the council's agenda document, it states the proposal provides 32 visitor spaces in line with CASBE requirements. Now, it must be remembered, that, that must be talking about bicycle parking, not car parking. There is no provision for visitor car spaces and there's only two car spaces for the place of assembly. This section of Victoria Street is a no-standing area and the proposed development provides no off-street parking capability for visitors, taxis, rideshare, food deliveries, couriers, postal services and the like. In reality, what would happen is a 675 residence that would be next door would instruct short-stay vehicles to meet them and drop them off in Acacia Place. This is completely unacceptable and will significantly increase congestion and the risk to residents at Acacia Place. The Acacia Place Owners Corporation could, and seriously, if it felt necessary, would implement traffic management measures to prevent this from happening. But unfortunately, this would leave the 675 residents in an impossible position due to the complete absence of their own facilities. The application cannot rely on Acacia Place facilities, including any of the car parking facilities, since they are privately owned and there is no requirement for us to provide public vehicle or access. Based on the above, the proposed development must be, must have adequate off-street parking to handle peaks and arrivals, arrivals and departures of short-stay vehicles. I suggest that a readily accessible ground-floor parking area, at least the size, at least of the size that already exists at the front of the existing building, should be included in the development. So the third point is traffic congestion from vehicles entering the property. The plan of the ground floor shows an intercom located six metres inside the property. This suggests that there's some form of vehicle control on entry. There is no facility for vehicles to turn at the entrance, so if they could not enter the car park, they would need to reverse out into Victoria Street. This would prevent, present significant risks to pedestrians, cyclists, motor vehicles and motor, motor traffic on Victoria Street, even more so if vehicles had banked up behind them.
Thirty seconds.
Okay, so I was going to talk about the access into the parking, it's only 2.9, 2.29 metres clearance, which is totally unsuitable for removeless vans or, in fact, any transit vehicles, which are all higher than that. So there's no place for removeless vehicles. So in conclusion, it's my view that proposed development would leave Acacia Place residents, Vicroads, the council and all road users with unacceptable ongoing traffic issues, a legacy that could last a hundred years.
The next speaker is Trevor Wells.
Thank you.
Trevor is the third last submitter.
Good evening and thank you, councillors. My name is Trevor Wells and I live in, with my wife, in an apartment 909 in Acacia Place, Abbotsford, which is on the western boundary of the Eden Building, which directly faces the eastern boundary of the proposed development at 675 Victoria Street. In 2011, we purchased our apartment off the plan and moved into the newly completed building in 2013. We chose our apartment because of its proximity and outlook to the Yarra River and the surrounding environment. It represented a safe, private and quiet home for us to enjoy and it has been just that. As we are now elderly and we are out and about less and spending an increasing amount of time in our apartment, I've come here tonight to talk to you about the negative effect that this proposed development will, will have on our daily lives and how we live in our home. Overlooking is an issue. Our apartment will be directly facing balconies and windows on the eastern side of the proposed development, just nine metres away. Every room in our apartment, the main bedroom, the second bedroom and the living, and the living room will directly overlooked. All rooms have floor-to-ceiling glass windows and our balcony has transparent balustrades. These will be overlooked, causing a complete loss of privacy and to retain any privacy, we'll be forced to keep our blinds down. Overshadowing, we enjoy living in the bright space that is our apartment, but this will change upon completion of the building next door. The height and scale of the development will result in the blocking of afternoon and evening sunlight and overshadowing. In the absence of sunlight, we'll be forced to keep lights on in the apartment during the day. We will experience noise both during the construction phase and upon completion at different times of the day and night, as nine metres is an insufficient buffer for noise. Let's just speak about wealth and health and wellbeing. The cumulative effect of loss of privacy and natural light and increased levels of noise will have a significant effect on enjoyment of our home of 12 years and how we live it. Given the time we spend in our home, these impacts are likely to be detrimental to our health and wellbeing. We have some safety concerns, is the issues around traffic management, parking and flooding Is the issue around traffic management, parking and flooding arising from the shortcomings of the proposed development? Will potentially increase the safety risk for all Acacia Place residents, but particularly older residents such as my wife and myself. On a regular basis, we navigate the busy crossing Victoria Street to go to Victoria Gardens Shopping Centre. The anticipated increase in traffic movement resulting from the greater level of occupancy at six seventy-five Victoria Street will create an additional safety hazard for all pedestrians crossing at the lights and will only worsen the traffic congestion which already exists. The deficiencies in the provision of short-stay parking and drop-offs such as Uber drivers, couriers and emergency vehicles in the development will likely lead to illegal stopping on Victoria Street, which will only increase the danger to pedestrians such as ourselves. Dodging Uber Eats delivery people on motorbikes, meeting customers from the building next door or frustrated city-bound drivers doing U-turns in our driveway, which happens regularly. To avoid crossing two lanes of traffic are obstacles that my wife and I may have to be forced to deal with if adequate provision for short-term parking is not included in the development. During our time at Acacia Place, Victoria intersection, as the Victoria and Acacia Place intersection has occurred during heavy rain, flooding. The development fails to include stormwater damage, drainage and damage plan and it seems inevitable that this situation will become more frequent resulting in increased safety risks for both pedestrians and motorists. It was flooded this morning, at ten o'clock this morning with the rain that we had. We could not cross at the lights without stumbling through water. During our time-
Thirty seconds.
During our time at Acacia Place, sorry, I know some fellow residents will speak tonight to you about the wider negative planning, community and political implications should the proposed development go ahead. On a human level, this development has significant detrimental effect on how many people live their lives. I ask you to put yourselves in our shoes. My wife and I enjoyed the home we created in our apartment, but this development-
Trevor, your time has run out, sorry. Thank you for your submission.
Thank you.
The second last submitter is Tony Holt. If you're in the room, please come to the front.
So if we don't start, I'm Mark Simpson, I'm making a presentation on behalf of Tony Holt, who couldn't make it tonight. Okay. I'm reading this presentation on behalf of Tony Holt, who is a resident on the eighth floor of the Eden Building in Acacia Place. Trevor has mentioned the street flooding issue and I would like to go into a bit more detail. The development lacks sufficient flood mitigation or a stormwater drainage plan, which would worsen localised flooding, endangering nearby properties, including Acacia Place. The council's flood modelling indicates a one-in-a-hundred-year flood level of fourteen point five-two metres. The developer's flood modelling has a similar level of fourteen point four-five metres. The problem is that the top of our driveway is at fourteen point three to fourteen point three-five metres, based on the survey data from the developer's plans. The proposed development intentionally raises surfaces to prevent water entry from the street into their property. The car park entry has a ramp at the apex of fourteen point seven-five metres. The pedestrian link has a maximum height of fourteen point three-five metres, according to the developer's plans, but the council officer assessment recommends raising that by a hundred and fifty millimetres. The council officers' report also recommends floodproofing or raising the sill level of the commercial office area to fourteen point seven-five metres. All of this is aimed at creating a fortress that pushes the problem to adjoining properties. This will impact on Acacia Place and most concern the Acacia Place car park. This will have financial implications to residents from property damage and will likely affect insurance premiums. So there are also two other factors I'd like to raise tonight. And one is the assumed stormwater catchment area and the other one is the inadequacy of the current drainage system, as Trevor mentioned. The, it's noted in the flood impact, oh, the flood impact assessment assumes that the water catchment area is only up to the west side of the bridge over the Yarra. It's the near side of the bridge. The actual catchment area is much larger and extends all the way to the end of the Barkers Road cutting, which is almost five hundred metres. There is only one small drain on the north side of the road on the eastern side of the bridge and this drain is permanently blocked due to silt and debris from the cutting. This is not included in the developer's flood plan, flood impact assessment. And I'm not sure if the council modelling would have allowed for this either. So the fourteen point five-two metres could be a significant underestimate. The current Victoria Street drainage system is inadequate. The drainage of this part of Victoria Street is currently totally reliant on the correct functioning of two street drains either side of the intersection. The grate on one of the drains is regularly clogged with leaves and other litter. On the other, the drain on the other side is susceptible to complete blockage. This has led to flooding of the business at the front of Acacia Place and water entry into the Acacia Place driveway. The development of the property will give an opportunity to improve the drainage of Victoria Street. I would like to see, Tony would like to see, a robust stormwater drainage system constructed as part of any development of the land. For example, for the current application, it could be run under the proposed pedestrian link to the Yarra River. This will prevent flooding of this part of Victoria Street and eliminate risk to drivers, pedestrians and flooding risk to Acacia Place and adjoining properties. Finally, on the issue of river flooding, is my expectation that Melbourne Water's submission contributed, the previous Melbourne Water's submission contributed to the previous development application being withdrawn. The proposal is being pushed through again with only negligible changes and I'm keen to see an updated submission from Melbourne Water. If there is a Melbourne Water submission for this application, I ask that it be shared with local residents and with the Yarra Council. My neighbour Emily will speak further on this and how worried we are about the lack of transparency about this process and the risk that normal planning controls might be bypassed. Finished.
Thank you. The next speaker, the last speaker, the last submitter is Emily Butzler.
And that was an excellent go at a very tricky name. Hello, I'm Emily Butzler. I live next door at two six seven five at thirteen Acacia Place. I'd like to highlight how the state government's new development pathway lacks transparency and procedural fairness, blocking genuine community participation. This application sidestepped Yarra Council through the Development Facilitation Programme meant to accelerate high-impact projects serving the public good. Instead, the DFP process has been hijacked to fast-track luxury housing in a building that flaunts strict planning controls designed to protect the Yarra River corridor without delivering a single affordable housing unit. The developers are exploiting the new process to revive an old application almost unchanged. Certainly, there's been no consultation at any stage with affected residents at Acacia Place. Rather than addressing council and agency concerns about the tallest development ever built on Yarra's riverfront, they're pushing it through the DFP with minimal tweaks. Ministerial powers have been used to sidestep recommendations to reduce its heightened bulk. The DFP should serve the public interest. Here, it's been exploited to maximise developer profit. This process has sidelined expert review from standard referral bodies and excluded entire communities, including residents of Yarra and Burundara who are directly affected. The public notification was manifestly inadequate. The agenda of this meeting makes it clear that the department only required notification letters to be sent to a very small proportion of the local neighbourhood, far less than council recommended. Even Burundara council was not notified. We should have had fourteen days to object, but Acacia Place residents received notification letters postmarked July eight, leaving them just five days to make objections. Ludicrous, given the thousands of pages needing review. The submission period was later extended without publicity. Most residents remain totally unaware they still have time to object. Standard referral bodies have been sidelined. Despite known flood risks and a previous formal objection from Melbourne Water, the revised application does not appear to have been formally referred to Melbourne Water. That defies basic planning protocol. How can local residents assess whether the proposal exposes them to greater flood risks without expert oversight? We support council's planners in requesting submissions from Melbourne Water, Parks Victoria, Vic Roads and further wind and acoustic advice. To qualify for the DFP, a development should offer significant public benefit in the form of social and affordable housing, critical infrastructure or enduring community assets. This proposal does not. It offers minimal public value and through its size and design, it fails to respond appropriately to its sensitive river location. Although formally lodged through DTP under clause fifty-two twenty-three, the developer is not proposing to actually provide affordable housing, only a cash contribution of just ninety-seven thousand dollars. That sum would not fund a single affordable housing unit, it's a furphy. The proposed community hub is assigned to the developer's own charitable arm, not an independent or localist organisation, but a tactical move that allows the developer to retain control of the space while presenting it as a public benefit. Charitable use is not secured as a condition or by section one seven-three agreement, so it's entirely likely the space will be rented to a commercial enterprise in the future. Unlike recent comparable developments, this design lacks meaningful public realm contributions. Only a narrow pedestrian link providing access from Victoria Street through to the main Yarra Trail. The path is mean in width and it is not accessible to people with a disability. Yarra planners' recommendation that at least ten per cent of dwellings should be affordable housing is not guaranteed and would only be negotiated post-development approval. The DFP was created to fast-track proposals of undeniable public benefit, not to bypass scrutiny, revive withdrawn proposals or maximise developer profit at the expense of environmental safeguards and local voices. I support high-density housing. I live in a high-density block. This application represents a massive overdevelopment of a small site. As you've already heard, without changes, six seven five will significantly and negatively impact my community at Acacia Place, the streetscape and, most importantly, the protected river landscape. Council planners have called for a reduced heightened bulk, deeper setbacks on Victoria Street-
Thirty seconds.
-from the western boundary and a wider, open-to-the-sky pedestrian link. These are significant changes, but as it stands, rework plans will not be available for public scrutiny. Since the DFP removes review rights through BCAT, any new plan should trigger a fresh application for council and public input. To apply the DFP here, strictive referral, community consultation and statutory process undermines public trust in planning and sets an extremely dangerous precedent.
Thank you, Emily. Councillors, are there any questions to any of the submitters or to council officers? councillor Wade.
I've got one question that I'm going to ask quickly and unfortunately I need to go. My question to officers-
Officers? Do you want to just come up? The microphone is on there.
No, no, it's fine, I'm happy to, I want to hear the answer even though I can't stay.
I'm going to give priority to councillor Wade because she does have to leave relatively soon.
Thank you, sorry, I was trying to offload it onto councillor Harrison, but I'll take it quickly. The officer recommendation, we just heard about the sixty days, that isn't enough, et cetera, et cetera. Has there been enough time and given council processes and given we're not the decision-maker in this instance, been able to scrutinise this to the extent that we would if we were the decision-maker? And similarly, do we think Melbourne Water has scrutinised this to the level that they did last time when they were a referral authority or has the rushing this time around potentially impacted those things?
Thank you for the question, councillor and through your chair. It's a significantly shorter timeframe, so, and we're narrowing now what we can consider. We've had internal referral responses come to us, which we have considered. There are external that DTP handles, such as Melbourne Water, Vic Roads and Parks Victoria, which we are now privy to. However, that's come late in the piece. The advertising notification period, as was mentioned before, wasn't handled by us. So we asked for a larger, much larger extent of public notification. So where it's landed is, in answer to your direct question, is it's a significantly shorter timeframe for us to make our assessment of this application.
Thank you. councillor Wade? Is that it? Okay. Questions at this stage? Yeah, councillor Harrison?
So look at really a follow-up on that. There's been references here to the DTP's referral to Melbourne Water, Parks Victoria, Vic Roads. Can you please comment on the timing of when you received copies of those, which you've indicated you've been privy to, and whether those were able to be considered when the officer was preparing their report that has been released publicly?
Thank you for the question, councillor and through your chair. We've received, Melbourne Water provided its response to the DTP on the sixteenth of June twenty-five. Parks Victoria as well on the tenth of June and then the sixth, Parks Victoria was earlier on in the year, sixth of January, but we were privy to these about a week ago, so.
Thank you. councillor Harrison, follow-up?
Just to clarify, the officers prepared an extensive report for this meeting. Were you in possession of the referral responses from those agencies at the time of preparing that report?
At the time, no.
Thank you. councillor Gomez?
I've got a few questions, but the most prominent one is, I think I heard you say that we have or you have received the Melbourne Water report. So have they removed their objection?
Thank you, councillor and through your chair. They have removed their objection, they're in support of the proposal based on seventeen conditions with notes as well. Parks Victoria, similarly, in favour of the proposal as well as Vic Roads.
Thank you.
Okay. Page two hundred and eighty-two of the agenda. As I understand it, many apartments don't meet the Built Environment Sustainability Scorecard standards, is that correct?
Correct.
Good. Follow on. The Yarra Council's policy guidance note on affordable housing for significant developments states that developments should, or fifty or more dwellings should be generating about ten per cent of them as affordable dwellings. Does the applicant offer this in the application?
Thank you, councillor. Through your chair, they have offered a three per cent contribution.
Is that equivalent?
But not the ten per cent, in my knowledge. We've recommended a condition that either are subject to the responsible authority and that appears as condition twenty-six of the recommendation. Thank you.
Yeah, one more question, actually two more questions. And so those conditions that we're recommending, they're not binding on the minister, are they, or the state government?
They're recommended and a number of our internal referral authorities have suggested such as expertise that-
But they're not binding, no.
Yeah, they're not.
Last question.
And the last one. I'm probably foreshadowing a motion from councillor Harrison, but my understanding of your work, of your response, is that if council was to lop off at least two stories and increase some setbacks, that that would be something that we would be more comfortable with in terms of supporting, correct?
Thank you, councillor. Yeah, the recommendation was based on a number of things. I mean, you've got a DDO requirement, you've also got a contextual element you need to consider and the removal of those two floors would make the development height commensurate with what's been approved or existing next door, which would read much better in our opinion along the Victoria Street, streetscape and from the Yarra River environs, which we were concerned about the current height that's been proposed.
Thank you, officers. I've got deputy mayor Mackenzie.
Thank you. Just a follow-up from that. So the two levels that are suggested in the officer's recommendation, would that bring down the height of the building so that it sat at the height of the residential floors next to the abutting building?
Thank you, councillor and through your chair. The two floors would have a total combined height of six point two metres if they were reduced. So I've taken a reading just to help you out in this scenario. The reading from the front of the site is forty-one point five metres. So that would be a reduction of two thirty-five point three metres, should those two floors be removed and the neighbouring site sitting at approximately thirty-six point two metres.
Okay, thank you.
councillor Austin?
Hi. Now that we have both the Melbourne Water and the Parks Vic reports, how do they tally with our- with our arborists' report in terms of protecting the tree life and nature on the riverbank?
Thank you councillor. In relation to, I suppose there's two elements there, the trees, our recommendation asks, there's three trees at the rear of the site that have been highlighted by the arborist to be removed as part of the proposal. We're recommending that two of those, which are native trees, stay by the minor relocation of the pedestrian path. That's come about from our internal arborist having a look at the site and going on-site and basically making his own assessment of the trees. One tree that is on the other side of the property is in poor health, according to our arborist also, so that's part of the removal process. And, sorry, the second question, if you could repeat that?
Are those recommendations also supported by particularly Parks Vic, but do Melbourne Water also have anything to say about that sort of landscaping concern?
Parks Vic didn't contradict any of those trees being removed as proposed, but have asked for their own conditions and follow-up reporting for their assessment in that particular subject or part of the site.
councillor Harrison, question?
I understand that City of Burundara, who is not a referral authority in this instance, as it had been with the previous iteration of this planning application that was handled by council, can you tell me, have they provided feedback to City of Yarra in relation to the current application? And can you share what their concerns might be if they've made a submission?
Thank you councillor. Acknowledge City of Burundara is here tonight as well. So, we have had, myself, multiple discussions with the Statutory Planning Department at Burundara, and they have lodged a submission to DTP. They've also highlighted the fact they would like to, in a condensed form, raise height, scale and massing of this building, and the implications it has on the Yarra environs as well as, in particular, the Yarra environs and across the river to Burundara residents.
Thank you. councillor Davies. There's no speaking from the floor, I'm going to get you removed if you interrupt again. Councillor, no speaking from the floor. councillor Davies.
Thanks, this is just a point for clarification, just coming back to the height of the building. At the moment, one of the objectors, I think Rachel Brown, if I've got the name right, suggested that the current, as it stands, submission, the property would be roughly, the building would be roughly twenty metres above the tree canopy, is that correct?
Sorry, in relation to tree canopy heights, I don't have the figures in front of me, so we've looked at comparison heights to the neighbouring building, so I can't clarify that at the moment, but I can take it.
If you did get out later in the meeting, just let me know. councillor Gomez, again.
One last question. So I heard that you've received the reports from Melbourne Water and a few other agencies. This is probably a question for governance, can we release those reports officially by the minutes of this meeting or any other mechanism?
Who's that question to?
Probably to the governance, yeah.
Mrs Delosa.
Thanks, ma'am. I'd have to understand what the reports are and, yeah, need to take that on notice, I haven't seen the reports, so.
Okay, thank you.
Follow-up, can I just hold?
Yes.
So ordinarily, in the course of a planning determination, we would receive some of those reports and we would include that into the officer's reports as attachments. The fact that we received them late, as per councillor Harrison suggested, don't you think we're putting the community behind the apple?
Maybe I'm going to ask Ms Osmond, who's the general manager of the department, because she'll have some context and some history with these type of situations.
Through you ma'am, thank you for the question. The process here is the referrals were sought from the department, they're not referral comments that council has sought. Therefore, for us to release those without seeking the permission of the department, I would say wouldn't be appropriate. We can seek some further clarification from the department if they would agree to these comments being released publicly on our website, and we can seek those comments tomorrow, irrespective, they are comments that the department will have to take into consideration and will form part of any decision that they make in the future.
Thank you, Ms Osmond. Any other questions? councillor Harrison.
Can I just ask a follow-up in relation to what, the advice that we've just been provided there? If council was the responsible authority in relation to this application, would we be releasing all of those referral responses?
Through you ma'am, those referral comments would form part of an attachment to an ordinary PDC report, which is commonly presented in this forum.
Thank you. councillor Harrison.
Some of the submitters have raised questions about DDA compliance with the pedestrian link, can officers provide comment on that?
Sure, thank you. The pedestrian link would link to a staircase at the rear, which appears to not be DDA compliant.
Thank you, more questions?
Yep. Has that been addressed in the officer's conditions that have been applied?
No councillor, it hasn't been addressed as part of the DTP assessment.
Okay, are there any urgent questions? councillor Davies has got an urgent question.
Not an urgent, just.
Well then, you don't need to ask it if you don't need.
Just to follow up on the green canopy.
Okay.
Yep.
Do you understand the question?
Yes, thank you councillor, and we're approximately twenty-six metres above the tree canopy. Thank you.
councillor Davies, follow-on.
And so if we removed two levels, would that bring us below the tree canopy then?
No, it wouldn't.
How many levels would we require to be below the tree canopy?
councillor, Ms Osmond's going to speak to that.
Through you ma'am, I might answer the question a little bit differently. The DDO control does not require the building to be below the tree canopy, so I think I need to qualify and answer, well, my staff will be able to answer that question. There are mandatory setbacks that are required to be included in any design, and that mandatory setback did not require buildings not to be seen above the tree canopy. But if the councillors want the answer, I'm sure my staff could answer that.
And just worked it out to be non-story.
Which in effect would be a refusal, because that would be effectively a redesign, which we're not allowed to, so we couldn't add extra conditions, we'd have to have a refusal. Okay, are there any other questions from councillors? councillor Harrison.
Just as a final question, we've obviously heard here tonight that the Vic Roads, the Parks Victoria, the Melbourne Water referrals came late. I just wanted to ask a question, I guess just to have it on the record. Council is, you know, there are aspects of this that council is making, you know, a position on tonight, there are other elements like clause fifty-eight, which has been mentioned by one of the submitters, these are all outside council's remit. I think there've been several concerns raised about traffic management, for example, and the flooding, these are all outside council's remits if I'm correct, and that is going to be down to DTP to be determining those aspects, so I just want to confirm that.
Thank you for your question, Ms Osmond, did you want to answer that?
Through you ma'am, there's a little bit in that question. So council has the ability to lodge a submission and raise a number of questions. We've based our officer's report on a number of internal referral inputs, many of which have gone to the matters related to traffic and to flooding, but from our own assets. The DTP will be concerning themselves with the referral comments provided from Melbourne Water, Vic Road, they're not Vic Roads anymore, the traffic team at the department, and also Parks Victoria. So there are matters of traffic and flooding that we have considered within our report, we have made an assessment, a broad assessment against clause fifty-eight. The department are tasked as the responsible authority to do those detailed assessments.
Thank you, I'm looking for a way forward, does anybody have a way, councillor Harrison, what have you got? Just can you press your button? Yeah?
Yes.
So can we get that on the screen, governance? Have you got a seconder? councillor Austin will be seconding that. So it's on the screen, I take it? I can't see what's on the screen. Oh yeah, here, I can actually. Okay, councillor Harrison, you've got three minutes to move your motion, starting now.
Okay, so I'm just going through what's there? Okay.
Yes, please, yeah.
So I'm explaining it, okay, so obviously this motion, I guess goes through a lot of the things that have been concerning councillors when reviewing this application, there are significant concerns, there's a lack of clarity about what council's role is here, there's been information that both council officers and councillors were not privy to at the time of the report being prepared, et cetera. So I guess I'm noting a number of things, I'm also noting the submissions that have been received by DTP, indicated here to be seventy-seven. I know personally that I've had over eighty individual people and a couple of organisations provide submissions, so I'm just noting all of that. I guess there's a lot in there about what has made us feel uncomfortable as councillors assessing this application, which has come at very short notice, and is really, we've been quite limited in how we can review the application, so I think that's really all that I've got to say. The other things that are there is really the officer recommendation of deletion of two floors, but also just making it clear that the height does not exceed the height of the residential floors of the abutting building. There's also an indication in there that we would like to see all of the referral responses that have been received from other agencies to be made publicly available to residents, because clearly we have been very, privy to those very late in the piece, but they have not been made available to the public. I think that's pretty much it.
So just to clarify, this is a motion to reject this application?
It's a motion not to support the application and to indicate, there's a whole range of conditions that we think if the minister is minded to approve this application, that these are the conditions that.
So we've got three options, to support the officer recommendation unamended, to support the officer recommendation with extra conditions, or to reject the officer recommendation and have a refusal for this application, and it's that third option that this motion is suggesting we undertake. councillor Austin, your three minutes start now in seconding this motion.
I'd like to first commend the officers on doing a fantastic report under such tight circumstances, and I'd also really like to commend all the members of the community that came to speak tonight, and under, again, such short timeframes have done such amazing investigative work to make very, very compelling, convincing arguments as to why this is an inappropriate development, and why I support councillor Harrison in this amended proposal. To essentially say to the state government, this is an inappropriate development, however, if you do go ahead, please understand that these are the conditions that should be considered. I'm very, very thankful to many of the residents for bringing up some very important points around not just privacy, but the importance of sunlight, natural light, airflow, those kinds of things on our living conditions, and part of the challenge of living in a city like Yarra, which does have to grow and will grow, because everyone wants to live here, because it's a great place to live, and the Yarra particularly is a very compelling place to live by, so I can understand why the developer wants to build here, but we do need to protect our natural environment. I also live very close by, I walk that trail along the river every day, I take my daughter to school along there every day. So for me, seeing this site developed with such an inappropriate-sized development, and with the potential to have so much tree loss there, and I do commend the officers on the trees that they're saying that we should save, because for the residents who live there, you will know that there is a Cookerbury family that lives there, and I would hate to see them evicted from their home. I actually just saw them this afternoon on my walk, I was very pleased. So I commend councillor Harrison on putting together this very detailed alternative motion, and I strongly encourage the other councillors to get behind the community on this and to support councillor Harrison.
Thank you councillor Austin, councillor Mackenzie.
Thank you. I'm not sure if it's moving on the screen, but just so that people who've come along know, it continues on, which is what councillor Aston pointed out. So it is a refusal of this, however, notwithstanding this, should the department of transplant planning determine to grant the permit, council's position is the following recommendations, and in these recommendations we've made, what we're suggesting, a couple of changes to them around the height, the one B to deal with that issue that was raised tonight, and in some of the submissions made to us about those sort of short-term parking and pick-up drop-offs, so that Uber, and then also more appropriate setbacks on the western boundary. I just want to make a couple of comments about this. Firstly, thank you Sharon for your work in this, and thank you everybody for coming and speaking to us tonight. And I do like a curated presentation, so that was excellent, we didn't hear the same thing more than once. I think this is the way to go, because it allows us to make our position clear while ensuring that those conditions are there and we still have a voice in the process. I will note, you know, there's no applicant here tonight, the first time I've been in a PDC where we haven't had an applicant, and yes, we are not the responsible authority, but it really, to me, does show complete disregard for the expertise of the planners at Yarra, their clear willingness to work with developers and other bodies to find workable outcomes, and the council's role as representatives of Yarra elected by the people of Yarra. The significant residential developments with affordable housing provisions under the Development Facilitation Programme is supposed to get more non-market housing into places where people need to live. I don't think anybody is opposing housing here, this surely isn't the spirit of the DFP, and if it is, that is a serious issue. We are really ready to build in Yarra, we have been really clear about that, but this development is going to fundamentally change our city, and that is going to come with great opportunities but also challenges. We need a social licence for that. Choices like this start to erode that social licence and we'll just be having an uphill battle. Lastly, I just want to touch on something that Rachel and Barry said, and there was in submissions about the river and the importance of the river, you know, this is indigenous land, this land was never ceded, and yet despite that, we are, all of us, so often welcomed to country, and when we are, by elders, we're told that we have a responsibility to the land and to the river, and it is, it is a living, integral entity, and it, to me, is insult to injury to not just work and live on stolen land, but also then go ahead with actions like this.
Sorry, your time is finished.
Yep. So yeah, I'll be supporting this and I'm pretty disappointed in how this process is going.
Thank you deputy mayor. councillor Gomez.
I think this whole process has just shown that our planning team is very professional, put in the hard yards even when we're not the responsible authority. We try and meet the requirements of the communities, as well as try and support very much needed development. Irrespective of how a Yarra council planning decision is made, it's an extremely professional process, and if the state government is going to rip that planning power away from councils, they should at least do it as well as we would. I endorse this proposal.
Thank you. councillor Davies.
Thank you all for coming out tonight. I know we've all got our own lives, but some of these things do impact our lives directly. Thanks for a very well-researched and well-curated presentation. I think what it really exposed was a great community working together. I'm hopeful that tonight the council will work together to support the community in refusing this submission from the applicant. It really is an inappropriate development, but it's also, more importantly, it's an inappropriate way to treat you, our community, that's the baseline, that's sort of my takeaway from tonight, it's yet again another example of the state government's simply just inappropriate treatment of our local communities. I'd also just like to say, the applicant not turning up tonight, like one of the previous councillors mentioned, really demonstrates their cowardice, they should be here, they should be listening to you, the community, that's the bottom line, they should be here taking responsibility for their choices. I hope that together, I think, I'd like to thank Sharon, councillor Harrison, for putting together this refusal, to put everybody on notice about what they should have done, could have done, the bottom line is they should have respected you as the community, and I really welcome the call for transparent government, I think keep calling for that. and I really welcome the call for transparent government, I think keep calling for that, keep coming to these council meetings, call that out for local government and state government, we're here to support you, and I'll be supporting the refusal of the submission and councillor Harrison's motion.
Thank you, councillor Davies. I'll just say a couple of words myself. It's hard to know where to start with this application. First of all, I really resent the implication that the developer has to take advantage of the development facilitation process and go to the state government, because we're all a bunch of NIMBs that stop housing development and the increase of housing supply at a time that we all agree we're in a position of housing crisis. In 2004, when I was first elected to council, there were 74,000 people living in Yarra, there are now 100,000 people living in Yarra, by 2050, there will be 200,000 people living in Yarra. We've had at times in the last 20 years, a sea of cranes through Collingwood, through where you guys live, all of those buildings didn't exist in 2004, in Cremorne, where I live, renowned Fitzroy, Johnson Street's one of the last places in Melbourne where there's still a sea of cranes down Johnson Street, building commercial multi-unit development, private apartments. This is not about fast-tracking a process that the council, the bunch of NIMBs and NIMB residents and, you know, a complacent council is gonna stop housing supply, what they want is second-rate housing supply over top-quality housing supply. If this had gone through the funnel of council, we would have had a better product. They don't want a better product, they wanna make more money. So by going to the state government, they didn't have to do 10% social housing, they did 3% social housing. By going to the state government, we had, I can't remember if it was 0.1% or 0.1%, towards community contribution with this fake AstroTurf community group that they're gonna put on the ground floor. You've got development that's obviously too high, you've got a development that, I mean, there's a big, big competition in Yarra for the worst traffic intersection. I think the gold medal position has to be the intersection of Burnley Street and Victoria Street. What is this development gonna do? It's gonna put, it's gonna create a traffic sewer the likes of which we have not seen so far. The only thing that will beat it is when the North East Link kicks in, and they'll have a traffic sewer at the end of the Eastern Freeway going either into Hoddle Street or further down into Alexander Parade. But for now, once this is built, you will be in the gold medal position, and there's nothing in this application about that. The thing that really worries me though, more than anything, is the Yarra River itself. The Yarra River, we are custodians, we as councillors and the community and the council in general are custodians of that river, and when we look at the Yarra River Keepers, they're the most meakest and mildest and politest association in the history of the world. They wouldn't last five minutes in my industry with the CFMU, but even they, even they said that this application, nowhere is there any giving back to the Yarra River, and they quite, they talk about all the laws that are there to protect the river, totally urinated over by this application. And when you've got the Yarra River Association saying that your application is no good, then you know it's bad. That's like Mother Teresa giving, having a crack at you. So we've got no choice but to reject this, and I hope it's unanimous vote. Thank you. Anyone else wanna speak? Councillor Harrison, would you like to exercise your right of reply?
Just briefly, like, you know, you guys have said it all, this is totally inappropriate, there's not a single social, affordable housing unit in this development, we wanna diverse Yarra, and this is not it, making a 3% contribution to a social housing fund is not contributing to Yarra's diversity. You know, we've just heard Mayor Jolly speak about the river and the fact that we should be custodians, you know, I can't support this application as it is, and I'm hoping that you all find that this is the best strategy forward tonight, you know, council's in a really difficult position, and I wanna acknowledge the council officers who have had to review this application in a really short timeframe and do the best job that they can do, with half the information actually being withheld from them. So I don't really have much more to say, let's get on with the vote.
Thank you. With that, I'll put the motion, all those in favour of the councillor Harrison and Aston motion, please raise your hand, that has passed unanimously. Officers, I'm gonna ask you just to explain the way forward from here, what's gonna happen from here on in, please?
Tomorrow morning, first thing, we'll be writing to DTP with this recommendation you voted on, and through Mary, and put that, yeah, so they'll be aware of it by first thing tomorrow morning.
Thank you. And at four minutes past eight, I declare this meeting closed. Thank you all for coming.